Maluwili tasil sel merkidro gwi. Maluwili tasil sel mura tirgal giestrigida l'osabir il merkial hiringer a House Bill number 11-27, tas 2S, HT2. Tial uldasul mola amle pasara Senate, 3rd November 2, ra El Arak. N'el asain n'ingin mura komiti ra JGA, mosel guk komiti ra Tourism, Environment and Maritime. Auera, na kulumol mal mosai ekat talgibl akura maskamiasa marital legislation. Edik wal sabela, akamitil dirigal introduce our baby, our Senator, our member sa komitim, our Senator sel nosail joiner gida El Al, l'itasil sel. Our members sel ngatyang, angarinya Senator Mason Yiree Abangal Whip, Senator Tap Songino, Senator Agitaya, ma member Senate, el Senator Tabalwal. Dakal member akamitin ding mad support our real environment, iswal koraro strada environment, mal musan nosail joiner ghi. M'nguegil gulo k'tablil asain n'ingin merakamiti ra judiciary, government, or governmental affairs, JGA, makamiti ra Tourism, Environment and Maritime. Almo osubangi, yandi mo reporting komiti a JGA. M'nguk tirigal Tourism, Environment and Maritime, akuk netusel mokandak ta public hearing, iku ka makamintse mo provide al mura JGA, mo report al girel tia. Tial bilil dalba angaringi, auera paskamiate al tirigal guk nosail merkial Lorenz Poi. Ah, basicling mo amend ra Title 24 Apalau National Code. Emo maigil ngra al ngiyanga eungela Environmental Quality Protection Board. Almura ander a Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment. Se gidhe akura klo al ra al seltial bill. Ediregal mo kutmakliya wal gor a timeframe. Al ngiya mo sel samita application, almura EQPV, engarinya gil time, ah EQPA. M'tomom godol ngil Environmental Quality Protection Agency. Al ngiya mongar ander se gidhe Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment. Al etamlamastria timeframe, l'girigal complete tirigal uridil within a 15 days. Eng sugum after saying, consider the approved, malsum dimla al akter ngi, consider the approved. Se gidhe akura kadibalomso del tia. Ah, umasin dragel function sa ah EQPV adiosisiu. Yandi tadiregal mle consider aty gidhe l'House Bill. Almo alaora state, almodingil permit ay galom godol kwa sing residential permits. Se gidhe akura maybe ngadibalomso del tial gidhe uldasul mola, ngiyanga ramatala komiti, el solicit a komitra public. So, aktingwa alda da gal mori say, yagama amaraninya ngatyang, emeru k'osomama l'mormeng sa ayel guk koment sa adra balu, tir a ngatyang. Alsum ngarinya specific al garmiu, alsumi klifire l'itala, si iblogera gi motral hansi. L'itala uldasura House Bill, magi momalasme isak komiti il kuk hansi regamiu. Emeru k'onge, ememeng se gil kuk k'miasomiu, mosmada del girel tia. Akamiti a diregal mla receive a written comments from organizations ngarinya, a Ministry, m'ngdiregal mla Ministry Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment, etamdiregal mla provide a written comments ngi, Palau Conservation Society, m'ndiregal mla kamita, mlasamita koments ngi, ma diregal abil society. Al altay mak pay wal sabegal, al nguogu tial listel, l'gibla m'ngul, girigal ar adra balu, soliguk momega koments, ma ngatyang e, wal sabegal lokorira Miss En Singeo. Al wal sabel kuk ma kotal mo, k'ngu t'ingel, al omte era abil society, I believe.
Dang maluwili swelbe, kamsulangi Senator Sangavao. Komsulang al beq Senator, l'guk nosabamiu l'kutmakli tial public hearing, magi guk me eswamamal audeswamil girel tial proposal la. Eh, ma akmle ngani atame galgoro, omeserini Senator e, adi ngani akura dimle, m'Telang al tokira alsel il gor a amlesawak al bring up. So, wanase gidhe l'wayal bolakangel board, etira ngul mura eungela Minister. And al dang, la musabel el Lord Abiya tial permitting process, al ngiya, asabel edel masangal wasese seya la mainal concerner tir, mainal concerner, how sa wase tial process amla mo korawayal al longasang, korawalo lipsongalom, almura tokira development. M'ang diswakal mulwal, asesel that statement in itself, akumdasweng gor a, gor awa nayil tokoy. Adhakal ngarangan galala, amlok tub olmoktakaringiya environmental protection. Mesel ba adturo ulal tial bill, adudul wase tiam mangasanga development. Eh, osisiu time, engwaya ba alo lubu tay gil language, sel ngara al seltial bill, l'ngiya masadra integrity ra environmental republic. I think, emeru k'onge a balu rubelaw, a deserve l'guk maktabiya luul ra development. Instead ra malmal ra luula environment, eh lobang almo masadra development, eh wa idhakat makliya luula development regid. El guk moma gatakl kmo, ngaranga aswadel prioritize sel tay pradevelopment. M'ang magaranga daralim, m'diregal m'ngarinya wasimius grand ra balu rubelaw, lol dub a, aulgaru ulala yegid el teteletai rasjobai. Emeru k'onge, edhobas tariran a, a taligibl mimokl process, ra yegid el tokira wa permitting, l'musabel mo beotl tirang may, leghadamlamot mahal balu e, emdeswil kmo t'egid ya mora el budoyak ngi. Akumdasuk m'ngaseng conflicting el statement ta omosadra in a development ra alsel a environmental integrity protection. Ah, onyerunge sel al tokira 15 days permitting requirement. Akora malbadevag kmo t'ya dik mo 15 days akom permit, mal uba kom deny. I'm afraid, kmo say amoruli, m'ang m'utokal pachakta di deny. Le right now, eng flu with a process. Makasabamal submit tial application, ra gawe, tirasubadalu wase, ngarangasong serini bo m'katmokla, yalakal sabamal etongosugaw, l'maskawa yegel samples is emlospe. This process amo force tial agency, m'di mo deny a permit because alakamokrangin eng mangay. Malsum m'ndiakal ungil katmokla, edhakal dabas tarira ar adaptia l'elauriartir, m'ngal agency l'kutmakli yegel proper el katmagil el tokoy, eh k'adhadi mo deny a permit. That would be the easiest way out of this. Akumdasuk momo difitra intentioner tir, el solir lol dub, eh orre adra permitting process. Almoutel tang, ngarinya sectioner alsel el masadra, a remove ayel roguil ngra al el review a proposal, el parta sel FIB licensing. Eh, yegid amadengel kmo, sel budosa da yegay, g'damlamom sadha foreign investment tel metnur balu rubelaw. Adhongu butay gey gidhe l'tele-tailera tl'gar, tl'gar ngel tial balu rubelawi. Emeru k'onge ar maabuul el adra balu rubelal, way gamama motit, ra ar mrawel adra ngod el balu. Letal mallel tial balu rubelaw, asel ledub, yar maabuul tial balu, atirge yagotl mo, osupirtir a yegel el bule la balu. For instance, aygal developmental mon, o ngarapkula dawal, yegid ya bla oilil mo, omaringala, aurayor el girela permitting ringiling, klo atelil tomelia dawal permanently. Ah, ar adra balu rubelaw, el kerababal dava, adi 20% atir au er. Elsabariel ngoy titiril mora ereroide, mosmiga galir. Ya rest, adi ngara adoyusimlay, mal uba ta amaut, mal uba ta mal albacl. M'ngua klo lobarad, el uspe allela yegel niagotl kme del resources regid. El mora ar ad, el masio adalong akli, ma klangar ar adra balu rubelaw. Ya daba ad, edhongu tial asimil, kmon digaya ado mesa oa yegay, etsa il diregal wayal duulu wase. Tamastirira a, a mimokla, ayegid el project ngara aroide el may, asugum et practice a green development. Why renewable energy, mal uba ta uspea, moditir il remular wase, ptiktangartir ma wa water catchment? Sen ngarinya klo l'ultutelel, elo makasil budula green development, which the rest of the world right now, au makasil budul ngi. So, ak ti mutlom aklat k'kmo, sel d'ngiti titirir, tiray gidhe l'adal moru ey ra tirar maabuul el ader belal way gamam. Yaklangar ra gamama momotit, ya albuul ra balu, almuten miisoeis, yaklungya ol, ah maldi morowept ra maldi sesamu al ad, ndiakal boraruktois al ad. Ayegid eh Minister ayel goram. Amiel dudra, kominga kabamarlom kataktrou Minister ngal el Sangavao, oooy. Eh, Senator Sangavao, ayegid ayel gor a, amle m'klo concerned, oh, the other thing was, auera gubes. Sel ngua ngara ala ra permitting, right now, engara imori ra betokla adra balu rubelaw. El lolut kirtir, ah Presidente gamiul adra Senate ak mong oy mal ubandia. Betirigal adel dong okler sel ngara boarda EQPV, angalitela, ra betokla adra balu rubelaw. Mabaradela ngara al lobang, m'nglemutu lobarad, letigiril ngar say, l'omte ey, adhakal klo marangar adra balu, ma klo marangal gamiul leaders ra balu rubelal milut kirtir. Tia ng'amo ngua ngara ala, ng'engal el tokoy, leng mo ngu, abaradela ngara ala, safeguarder tial environment ra balu rubelaw, el ngul masadi imol ad. Ng'engal el tokoy. Eh, edhakal gigerel tokoy, el girel di imaterakler ngi, el ngul masanga imol ad, m'angayam a a determiner destinationer tial balu rubelawa environmentalima natural resource ngi. Girel el tokoy, l'ome serini ar betokla. Komingsulang.
Malso la, Miss En Singeo, regel koment serini, girel tial legislation. Madiregal suggestion ngi, l'umdaswakamiti mal appreciate serini, kwa se paybodakan seidera sel kuk sumgalamam rurala, el girela kwa se kada expedite at koradivelovent. Eh, wal sabegal misra kuk separate l'adoritil, bay kuk masadra segidh uldasu. Mal, m'ringasulem regel koment sar gawe, tirigal ma m'nganga komiti ma m'ngasulem regidh l'ol, plamdu ol oding written al koment, sel plam samita mo parta record ra akamiti. Eh, with that eh, m'nguba nanmora anexel speaker regid, ngarinya Macy Nakata. Please m'ngdimutu introduce sar gawe, ma ala ad malubong kuk ti gawe, l'gora diregal mura record era. Sulang. Di m'ngil, komingi, di m'ngil abon dooral, sumka feel comfortable, ndiakal out of disrespect tak ti, se gal di m'ngil abon dooral sumsomiu. Alsum m'ngil din dang ok, k'ayidang ok.
Milit asil sa ngakankleka Macy Nakata, akom malmusulang aty al te al l'guk nosabamamil meye she aygal ah the swamp, ngakhangatyal lobongela abil society, akwanda youth mentor a abil. Um. Tial mo marula yegidh changes, l'mor tial ah environmental quality protection board. Um, edhakal sabel dingil resolve ayegidh roguil korra insufficiencies ra tial EQPV. Ding byrul ya, byrul ya korra possibility, almo endanger regel future gamam el youth rubelaw. Eh, umel, we might lose the deep connection el ngani gamam, el altay and to the, to nature. Eh, l'ngiya mo result ra mal klo loss ra sel idea ra palawan identity gamam. Um, ngani sel, ngani atkor belal, l'blek subi, ra umsubra abil, l'kmo, ah korora korora overdoth, el degal malulorakarangaw, and ah, tial gorasabel alamdaswengi in a way that, alsum godol mulakayidh l'betokal changes, eng mo malmoklo albulal, givam albangarinya future generations rubelaw. Sulang.
Sulang ah, Miss Nakata, regel koment serini, mal sisi, akuma rakaseng malrepresenta segidh l'guk sentimentar, gigerel adal, gigerel atkor environment. Ak ti, Senator Songino, alsum ngarinya korra koment sar members, sel solil korra al mutal aska clarification, ak omdiol darsak maskamiamayi, allagi kada m'baanan mura anexel al gierdale Elung Hideos, al diregal guk moswal momega statement del girel tial legislation ngarmada.
Um, good afternoon, my name is Elung Hideos. Sorry, I'm gonna speak English, my plown is not that good, but I just wanted to say that as a returning youth, coming back, I just recently finished my master's program in Japan. And coming back, I wanted to work in the community and be able to create change, and positive change for our environment, our country. And I guess with this bill, it worries me and gives me concerns about the future of how this change will be for us that are becoming, that will be future leaders for our environment and our natural resources. And I remember, there's a saying from many of our leaders that has said, "Our environment is our economy." And I think with this bill, it's, the priority seems like it's for economic development, if I'm wrong or not, I don't know. But it sort of brings concerns to how this will impact our environment, as well as for permitting and the protection of our natural resources. And for, for my last statement, I would just like to say, um, thank you for having me to, having us to share our opinions and our concerns. And I just would like to, um, sorry, just like to say that with this um, sort of, this bill, we would like to make sure that we we make sure that we are doing the right thing for our future generations, so thank you.
Sulang, Miss Hideos, eh, pasate elela, Senator Agitaya, ng'la korangarinya karila korakamiu.
Oy. Ah, yungu, ngaminga ngwane, nasiaman, wina master, on what and when?
Ah, my master's was in global environmental studies, with a focus on women's fisheries management policy and conservation. Sophia University in Tokyo, September 2021. Thank you.
Oy, haleda, congratulate nyagamiti, da congratulate, rangal e, asel, ngasalal, radir belaw, l'mlamol ngua master serini. Just so you know, Sophia University amal ungil school ra, tarang dirigal tap university ra balu raxiaval, mal congratulate ra el on, tial mal ngarbabal school blabul, ngu emi olon shir balu rubelaw. Oy, halak pasate elela, Senator Yiree Abangal.
Saurra, te ale chere, umel otosong, ng'akamia m'dingel wase tial House Bill. Asenet akuk marusel, kuk ngar elele, ngirigal momrekarra house, se kuk pinasenet. Ma k'adonarmeng sa baby ra koment ter gami, a baby ra gami, tadiregal alomododu. Ding as a Senate, ngiramal trial understanders sel kuk, l'uswir our House of Delegates, sel logonotmokrti al uldasul mola. Magomral wase, tirigal kuknamododu, ambukna expresser sel concerner tir a what the possible, possible implicationsert tial tokoy akmumola. Magukti questioner ng'agal bayagor gami wat yegid. Understanding or sel reasoning, r'aku House of Delegates, in relation to the permitting process. In the absence, ng'agidh uldasul mola, ng'aku koral doswir, I know a lot of you are part of NGOs, the environmental community. Ng'aral doswir girel say, is there a better way to protect our environment and at the same time not impede development? Akm'ninge se gal toko degal, they can't always go together. But ng'ras eduru lil kuk solve sel problem, kuk plalisa House of Delegates, akumral baby ra Senators, adhiregal way se l'uswir. This could be the extreme, ding ng'aku korra solution, sel kuk oferingi, m'ntsa amal gor a consider ngi, al ngarinya gami. Sulang e chere.
Halangu ye, since Akor Obama, yegak, regan den, I'll pass it down. Sulang ya Senator, I think, ang even amangar, asel k'review ngal bill, eh, ngirigal gor a ngubtay yele, l'uswagal, eh, ada m'dangal k'mulasanga environmental activism, ding giregal ngubtay yele, eh, eh, omeserini from a logical standpoint. And so, I went through that process, and I think that's the reason why, akum r'angal kmo, girel el bay kuk ngarinya development, b'ilra, ah, olbeira kalulaw. Almo m'gatakl kmo ngarangal tay pradevelopment, taswat, magaranga the support. El remul almo obayot, er gidh akutmakli yegidh el tokoy. Ah, onyerunga akumdaswak kmo, ah, al ngani amonday, edh m'brngi, k'dimle m'bramonday. Dimla kam solve our problem, k'dimle mover problem, l'guk m'ul, mo oy tira tar oblil k'kmo, kuk m'ongarala l'ringin digyal sabamam, right? Eh, nga ka'undasak kmo, gidhe l'ader belaw, akotl mallo m'saruhudra yegidh el tokoy. Ma uling k'day, layaklang ngarinya way yegidh l'luudel masabaakler gid. Nd'akal mangasongasera arad, elsabel edel boden dong okl imol balu edh ngutial tokoy EQPV. May, m'daabangalidudu, ngaranga asabel edel gutmakli, magaranga thongaswira EQPV noswira balwat, l'expedite ayegidh el process serini. I know, for instance, ikweyel ma klo project, a lot of times, the process calls for tamah, among matadevelop paygal plan, emeru k'onge me ol, eubangal malasmal, el fitar ngi ra alsel balu rubelaw. Eh, yegay amo cause a lot of ayegidh l'expenses, sel mortirigal investors, sel mengmo m'knitra agaysair gida el ader belaw. Boden improve our process regid, m'ang kadbay mahotl k'do me, omesera luul belaw, eh, omoba ngunorti al blay. Nd'akal debode babya blay edh me, do bangal force regi il motmura alsel. I think the opportunities for us, el improve ra luula EQPV, is up to us. To lead the positive change, elsabel edel magariruiya, a environment regid, esobaklia economical development ra balu rubelaw. Nd'akal lakal sabel, it's up to us to do that, and it's in front of us, the opportunity is now. Baybodakadhakatmakli, eh, kuk thomesera kuk development bill, l'nyamo sobaklia, atokya development. It's not too far a reach, sulang.
Malso. Oy, somlegora, pose sel questiona, Senator Yiree Abangal, ng'sabamil with inner sel omohododu, eh, kokm'ngu ayel kuk segidh l'Vital Said, iku k'ngu ah, envidat, k'dadirik m'ngu ayel suggestion sar gawe. Eh, ma ng'aulan ngul sa, l'girime, aywin el mo, koramla, yeldrawla, olalubong.
Eh, ngakungil bakungir sel karila ngi, Senator Yiree.
Oyakla karila klemen sel swama, ayamohododu.
Oooy, akmal m'ringa ngaka, omartay gil secrets mo. Oooy, Senator Yiree Abangal ngaka korra, omdaswak sel Karim. Emral tokoy, sel taberay kaygideng, ak malokortirigal kuk ng'barad, lobangegal ngatyal adra jobai, l'business community wase, lakadipo ra hiring, el dimo complain. Mal uba komol, koradi m'atak, t'irigal Senators, m'ngd'akamokirakir. Swaktil al Karim, l'ekadawaya do si, ke dourol, makalourol, lo si, gera solusyon. My wife say. M'ngoyak se gidh l'delia, ayen, Director Singeo, eng diwaya b'lid, aygal b'lid angarinya ayegel kuk korala, al waser, al adra ngod el balu, sel lamiraplay, eh, tongubtoor arirabol si, sapo, way kaygidi. M'ng, akora diregal begitl wase, aku tokora mo, ol si supertial development, economic development tel mo, obangeel tial gor malore edh ringi, yegel el bol korra matamala kaygidil. Eh, nga ka, of course, eh nga ka, mal swakal tokoy, atokoy rasjobai, swakar roguil ader bela bol on. Ayegel, makasakasirma, tamirma, el omkado ora yegel solir. Mesel kuk pokrang si ayen, m'mosadra development plan, ak mal mo excited, lekwasaya, paybododa ke, paykoto koramom dasu wase. Wangarongil development planner bablta, balilyo, ngayaura, kaya ngal, ng'regel atel, regel korra bitsel countries. Ng'regel atel, regel kukwaya balu, m'angarangal maalwa thalongo balu. Ng'regel atel, regel ng'ral balu, my say. Bangkolosal ubeng, kaduk ngaranklel, se amal korak pok excited el girel. Di tial tokora EQPV, serakot lorang, sa adra house sel masadra ngi. Ngorawaya dil dul, dil mondail waset ati orreth, ngaramang malmeod, ngaramang malmeod. Emlabesel waseng, seral m'kutmakli tiala, eng malaringa m'ktaker ngi. Eh, nga ka malore ngasulal, ng'el kuk former, edi, ng'el korongi redil better half ra, akuk Senator Mia. Ng'el m'le invite trangak, m'le invite trangak, l'mura EQPV, lobantrier adra construction, l'waya Senator Yiree Abang. Makukoradimlo, makoradong okl, wase kame m'kukomkororengasamamso. Eng motit tiala, emosmo di serogil talantangil tial EQPV act. Masaya, amle kotal tay, mal kwa se wow, ngakakmle ele, m'korobelal, tarawalela tourism industry. Emilgarangey t'aksal, madangalit yang. Ma k'malmla ng'ila, rongukl, mal mo ngil madangali, ma k'madingel wase tial agency, angarinya m'ktaker ngi, engarinya uul, engarinya klungyo lel gireth, ar ader belaw. M'nga ka adra jobai, mal welkam, wase the improver a FIB, m'ngarang, ndi gotak ader belaw. Esel balgulose kutka ader belaw, se ki dar ader belaw, tial luke la klangar agid. T'eyau ul, ng'rulidma ki da ader belaw, l'ngodra yegal kuk, nd'akadasa lorre edh l'waya yegal neibor, l'balu a huripin, ma Indonesian, k'dhadi meredet, solir lol tarawa, ng'arama, 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 m'dath. Ma tirigal korra malasmal, lol, sis akar tirigal, m'gierel adel solir losjobai wase. Ngirel lo, mesa yegal klangal t'ngat, l'meliwek regid, r'tial balwat, emo creative. K'dhumom daswak l'uswadl wase, ng'ral jobai, au ngil atel tial balwat. Magukti on tik awase, mora adra house. Awase, uera obam, omagamiu, le gamiu l'lo meserini el altay ma, oooy, komen nasay. Awase, kamutiala, epom ngil mesang, esel concerner ng'ake Senator Tabalwal wase. Ako tara at, sanitation, m'way kaygid rolela. Ayke kotal m'klo tutelel, ng'akat tial, l'korom, m'bataktul wase, k'damral di, ngarinya kamaldil, di, ngarinya kamaldil, ra adal baby ng'ora, ndirokakamadra kobit, ekora timetmada, atyang, alikalang ngarinya korra m'knitra. Eh, gora timet matara, at yang, alikalang ngaringa gora maknitra. Al gora, sel talbolul, lombol overflowa igal. Eh, nga ka, mal momalatkel wasi, auul mong lorangi tiel iku pib. Ngaringi aurere, il giril marul. Emerqong ngil, abetokar ngal, ngalkar belaw, sabedel, white tirakidul kukka, la encourageer tira director. Tokukseyasoril toko, mataklamomaskulir. Edhi regal, angaringi, Senator agitaya, kukkar ngalkiel belaw, meduora ikaikidel engineering, mayi ikeikidel technical aspects rtiel agency. Il omkomkadameram, kuktila, kalmedel. Ekadal abay sabedel kukpay recruit, deatrak, taral ngalkiel belaw, dir, asorir, lol ngasewa, tokoyra environment, sanitation. May gel tolletelela kukka, waseng, magaranya mo ngila, heldar ader belaw, ildia kadidore edh ra. You know, there's no money that can buy your health. Your health is your wealth, dhar tiel, iku pib, ulmatakrigi klarwalitsing field, mawaykeikid. Leikesel, mataru'da. Eng, ndia kadodangir, ngalgal akukmili, le ramuta ngarang. Mal, akmal lol ngitul wasi, kahal ebay beerei, ebay dosi, ga nesor, ar adel, ngalkiel belaw, soril louroraringi, improve rngi, eh, kukal ngasukid, seikid, lsepretel agency. Ndia kalmaknit, tiel autoswil wasel pora Ministry of Agriculture, May, Fisheries. Ndihale, way kamamukku ader asyo bay mensumama development. Kadati morang ayangal, lol mora southwest. Eh, tiadala laureol lurere la, Minister Victor. Ah, adolkoto gora serson, sabela sersel, el altai ma technologya, sersa ah, marura, ndia kadil ut, mangaringa marula gora tokukomkadu ora ngarang, mal ngarang. Eng kuktokora fisheries, ngeki da, ngalkekara, Kevin masabalun ngar sel, blakarungulol ngasewa ah, fisheries. Ika te, aler ader belaw, sabil developa safe sanitary, eh, protected el tokoyra auror ma development, ngkotol kadalal tiel lurere la, Steven Victor. Eh, magaranya kadukmuthi al momonguk, momakarart yang. Tiay misokadala auror, lurere, environment, agriculture, fisheries. Kamam tiel mlamop partner ngi, magi wasi, el akmal blakarungu marasa ins. El agidol si suparara at, trwatal ader belaw, meduun marulangarang, meduun marulangarang, kala, talom ngarang. Beata takalaurol, malisi esekid. Madhi on tik awasi, el polutul mo komongil, lomesakla, masel klungela, lurere la Ministry of Agriculture, Fisheries and Environment. Emerqong ngi, akmalotiraklisa lol goringa Director Singeo, eh, a development, that's a big plan. El both involve rakamam, el ader apisane, sumar ader kamiul, mangutaling, amar ader environment, ma, mobetoka, agiril partner, giril a development plan. In the meantime, etab ekal laudel, mal protect rgi. Sula.
Mamsaula, Ms. Olgrilakmal, ngimal appreciate the committee regel comment ser kau. Eh, vol sabedel kukka, lalangulma sa, hisongol, molto, tingingal.
Sula, for this opportunity, um, akna tagging my capacity as a citizen, el gora marula kamenter nga. And so, thank you for this public hearing. Akoteng, kama swakal gora, ah, xakmul wase, senators wase, swakaloreng asulil gal first to the Agency of EQPB for their hard work and services to the public and the people, my god. Ige agesar abelaw, that's first. I have dealt with them as a citizen, as a businesswoman. So, akmal agree with most people that sometimes we have a headache dealing with them. So, that is not an issue here for me. There's nothing more for me to want to see, easy access to do what we need to do, sabedur tarabla, amar development rgi. But I think it gives us pause to really think twice when we do our developments. Ige gora dosper ngira, arrole damora, ikaikidado ruler ngira balu. So, to me, I think that was an essential point when I realized, segidel mali important role are EQPB. Eh, ang ikaikid, Senator Whips is asking us, well, what's the solution then? I agree, patoka problems serngi. I too, akna, amexar adam complain, even though for the basic digging of ground, and ngaringi permit dosper ngi. So, I don't think it's a problem as much as EQPB. I think it's as much as how you want to define those roles again, as EQPB should enforce and regulate, rather than shifting it to another ministry. For me personally, akmay omral wasi, it would be more better if EQPB is independent body agency, because it protects not just the interest of the Palauan people, it also protects all interests from all other sectors. So, we need that. And without it, I don't think we'd kind of have the development we have now, even if we complain. Qundasul ngara, teteladelang, is because of EQPB. There's no other regulatory agency that's been as effective as EQPB, despite its own faults and flaws. Akmal accepter segid. So, here's another issue. If you want them to do their job, then help them. Fund them to the resources they need, so sabel effectively implement the yamospe right away. Because I remember when we wanted to have something done, they didn't even have a civil engineer or structural engineer to review the designs or the issues addressed, because tamirira new engineer, civil engineer, whatever they need for these developers. I think the biggest challenge EQPB had to face is they were always underfunded, undervalued, and underestimated the value of their work that's required. So, diga ngari, because we have to protect our water, our resources, because it's a very serious issue. Toxicity and contamination and pollution is a real issue in the developing world. And we need an independent agency that can do that without the distraction of other areas. So, akmal ngitregamil wasel, lagamur tal chenzel tal office, but given the resources they need and ask them what they need, so they can work with us. If adamdeel wase, mal gora stricta permitted dinmora residence, then make it law wase, ta ida tetelala residence for the EQPB to address. Fifteen days, if you don't approve, then it doesn't work. But make it the law for EQPB, not another ministry to enforce or to regulate. So, to me, I think it'd be more clear if we try to work that way. Di ulak madial wase, utadmal demioda relir, is they don't have the resource to respond, to give you the needed work that we need to address, because their hands are tied. And they have more stricter rules and regulations to follow, because gi dal adabala, neswada ikeikidala. Makmal ngitregamil wasel, lagadurutl lomesel wase, this is going to solve the problem, I doubt it will. The real problem is the EQPB existing structure, and what are those powers they have that maybe you want to change. So, it's more easy for them to implement and refer to those areas where the state can have maybe more authority over, and where the national government has more authority over, as an implementing body for the national government. Ndia akmal ngitregamil wase, the only reason Palau is pristine despite the weaknesses, ma limits ral EQPB, is because of the only effective regulatory enforcement agency right now. And that is EQPB, so I have to give him due credit for doing the hardest job. So, akmal ngitregamil wase, I understand, feelings are ader haus. I, I, I agree, akna, arumurta ikeikid omdasur ngi, but it's not, to me, should infringe on the security and the stability we need, wasa environment tabella wa protected, because not only they watch environment, they also address chemical toxins, nuclear waste, all these other stuff, and their job is so big, they're doing ten works for one person, and I think that's not right. Makmay ngitregamil wase, mo meset tiel body of EQPB, and give them the power they need, so they can enforce effectively, timely, and the resources. And then you go from there to define wasa ngara limits rtiel, and what it requires, so they can follow those. So, that's to me, my hope that you can consider. So, kumamsula, take it up, Attorney.
Mamsaula, Ms. Arco, ngregel kament serngi, mal, willa gil kament serngi, magimal appreciate the committee again. Emerqong nga ka, mo on tir, Ms. Tarita Holmen, mo, mo du swir giril tiel legislation.
Sula ngi, Senator Sangabao, kumral masaura, opportunity me, eh, emula public hearing. Um, akamensera nga ka, mal similar, akmal agree with all of the comments that have been said so far. Um, my, my comments are really around, ngaramral moktekar tiel bil. If it's really to solve a problem, then let's make sure that the solution is actually going to be effective. I agree with Rison wase, we might be making the situation worse by putting EQPB and all of this authority into a ministry. And I'd like to ask the question, what, what kind of homework has the Senate and the House done to look at other countries where the environmental regulation is under a ministry instead of a semi-government entity? I think that would be a good thing for us to take a look at. Akmal concerned with us doing sort of knee-jerk policy. And I think that this may be an example of one. I think there's a lot of governance issues with this bill that mal appropriate for the JGA Committee to take a look at. Um, for example, if EQPB is not in a semi-autonomous entity, you're going to have a situation where, you know, we know CIP is one of the biggest developers in Palau. They're going to be applying for permits from their, you know, another ministry. From a governance perspective and checks and balances, that's not really appropriate. So, um, that's a concern that I have. I also really agree with Rison's comments about how, you know, a lot of challenges with EQPB is that they don't have the resources they need. Ngakangartian, alek, tirakal dingartial citizen, eh, part of the environment and conservation community. I have a bachelor's and a master's in environment and biodiversity. Um, my sister was an environmental educator at EQPB in the nineties. My mother was a chairperson of the board for many years. Um, my sister Tiare and Senator Sangabao, you were on the board together at one time. So, I'm really happy you're, you're handling this public hearing. But there's, I, I just remember my sister Tiare talking about what a source of pride EQPB is for Palau, because she lived in other countries in the Pacific where they did not have this type of an entity, and as a result, their environmental regulation really suffered. So, I just want to comment that if we're really looking at responsible economic development, and that's the goal, then having EQPB outside of a ministry would be the risk, the way to do that. Um, if the issues are that it's cumbersome, that it's arbitrary, opaque, and unreasonably time-consuming, my question to all of you is, why? Have you looked into why it's cumbersome, why it's opaque? Because those are the accountability issues that we need to all work together to hold EQPB accountable to. But I think, um, you know, us citizens can do as much as we can, but I think the O E K is in a much better position to conduct oversight hearings, to call EQPB, talk to them, ask them, why are these things happening? And my question to all of you is, have there been any meetings with EQPB about this bill? Have they been invited to come to this hearing today? Um, I think these are really important issues. And before, when my sister was an environmental educator, there was a lot of outreach done in the communities, people were much more aware of what EQPB does and the role, the very important role that they serve. And I think we need to make sure that those positions are there and they're fully supported. Um, I know there's also challenges with ethics. I would ask that board members be, you know, required to take ethics trainings, that we have fiduciary trainings for board members as well. These might be some potential solutions. Sula.
Mamsaula, Ms. Tarita Holmen, regel kament serngi. Di, swadalu ay, sel ndiakal swadal tiangabo, tovde ngi atibimel. Swadalu ay, sese kame tiya, mo holdra separateel meeting, lobangeal a ministry ma EQPB. Ah, akumra kasing, talgibal mo komal, mukukswadam, sati, alirar ader abalul, kukngartian, kukmukmuk du swir, emerqong mama mo mitel separately, lobangeal ikel, morya hirigel ngi. So, just further, eh, aktrigal ngartang, tiangha haus bil. Of course, as Senate, tangaringa uldu swir, I thinking, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to olto da ulso mal kukiril tiang, eh, iki modiberate, deliberate ringi, akuktolon alam. Right now, a main proposal tiel hearing, ah, di solicit a kamenter, kame, magimal appreciate the gil kament seringi. El bo, unless you have a specific question for any one of us, as your senators, and you're more than welcome to ask that. Maybe they can plead the fifth if they want, but, kabongi, Ms. Tarco. Well, eh, of course, aktrigal liste, it's open now, so anybody, swalmutel ngadudu, eh, Mr. Masabulum, maka tirgal baybirar adam lamisowis, masil, di oldar si imomiwe, kabongi.
Ndia ka, manaswal mutel, you know, clarify and agree wase, there are challenges in EQPB, and I think we're all frustrated, akmal agree. Di akuspel wase, bay mo meset talaliga na EQPB, am improve rngi. Get those weaknesses or lacks or constraints and change them. And then give them the power, resources they need to implement, but make it easier for people to do the things they need. And that address ikaikid, is your EQPB. So, to me, I, I agree wase, ngaya constraints EQPB that should be addressed. The, again, I think, you know, ngaya value EQPB role, but rather than move it to another ministry, look at the law that exists and make some amendments to it that it has on its functions and duties. So, ngaya efficiency, but at the same time accountability, ngaya balance. So, that it can really happen, I believe it can happen. So, I'm asking the senators then for that consideration. And again, having an independent regulatory body, malungil, because it keeps a balance between all the other ministries, I really hope you consider that factor as well. Sula.
Yes, mamsaula, Ms. Arco. Kabongi, Ayrin.
Senator Saltang, ngatara, dirakal lungil, lakumdaswal la, ati katalamal ngi, management ral, ma administration rtiela. Kalel lungil di the kukpom reduce ral tirgeta seven, la kuktimofaepa. Perhaps, as seyakukmo, you know, sel ngititirar, seven el adel mura imor rumel, mo make a decision ral aku ter ngarang, kalil, lomkadu ringi, it takes longer, everybody. Ngadama udoswel, ama adama udoswel, emakiteki da ader belaw, akotol kadidang mes. Mangir e, abangal akuswal, mokorang, ding gora halil talgib, eng kuktaang. Kamamakukmud, akuk ader asyo bayel, ki, memerekateka, tokotoki, kaititkangale. Eng, eh, emomrek. Ding, kalel pol makasara, ating, pol gora expedite. Eh, plus, eng, engkeikidel giril executive director, we need someone in that oppositionel. Selal plaringi, ngel gora better halfera kau. Oi, we need someone.
Msal, Ayrin, go, gamlo mentionel, tiel iki dam, tiakidel malasmal balo, masawanalad. Koda with you serngi. Oi, sa teelil ngel eh, nesgalada, Mr., usabulungalabakal. Waldu, Sula ngi, Chairman eh, malungilitasin, silakorak, ma kame ti, Sulara Tealan me, provide a kament rtiel, important rtiel bil. Um, gora di three points as swakal bring up in terms of ikel mlamadungu rtiel bil. Ah, one, um, masing mal, within here, er, demesa sentence akmung timely at update at trust territory laws. I couldn't agree more. I think it's about time, especially with our, our pride and our work as a nation, el masadaku protection environment. Ah, mang swakal di, wa, kora di point out, tok masing, you know, igal state, tangamral ngarinya constitution ngi, ngarinya wishes ral development rgi. Et, eng, for a long time, emiringer gi da, ah, mayi gi da uldasul, eh, equate rgi, malukdo dosiswira, as i EQPB, selukku mes rngi, akmose, ndiak, tiaplikisiana mal gayo.
Deak, ti application amal gayok, amal gayok, amral ngater sel vision amal gayok. Ulaq mention was say, akmung korat talgibel biotolurior lekbo, lotki apan office. Apan program regida, akura operator was say. nga ya vision, ma management plan igal balu, every year toutbok la work plan akmosing. So, magara asa Balumam, esemera national tuuk vet ringi akure, mese oy, tiya inline. Manga ya capability regida lo mes ringi, ma processes regida in place. Ang erunging, klotutalela kumdaswa the keep persel, ah, independence, me integrity, ala aden mega determination, obra the white tagit. I can tell, mese ndiak asel dimol ade mega decision affect ak, aklangar abra adale, ang mga mataltan. Obra the lurior. Ang sel existence rabord, malubong, gora oversight tra, alsel tal obis white tagit de mega decision, kumdasma klotutalela. Ong ede, ak maral surprised, emral amazed, eh proud, eh tirigal youth, activist regida ngartiang. El masaada igal guk, ah, igal oguswir, ma concerns etil, yela future etir. Ah, sego loaisel, mese ak narat talklol, omral marakap twenty six, eh, mea one, raha kotu klol, mildong asil say, ah, climate justice. Odoh mes rangal ngar sel, mese igal morur elang, ngater etapasul meramam, ma future mam. Report regida ak mudor years from now, igal gadarang ra, ababaldaob, may gal nga yoam la, inandirid, mo dekasa del key. Edeha nga odol adem dangali sel war other cares, alsel sel balu. Ma ulak swakal mutel misik, mese kalal teal dosisibia, aldos, malubong underlying, ah, vision regida, mese climate justice, kudetega teal, er main setirigel mo olbanan igal decisions regida, ngarmatatal time. Koradi naggekidat three as swakal bring up eh, sulara tal.
Um, ah, kamiti, mister Mr. Balu, akura swal, maybe who sel clarify sel statement tal kau, lem kotul duli. Kukoram nospe ra example, rapan management plan. El because nga ya plan ya national government, tamastriya resources low river. Are you suggesting akkuasal sukumastei tangariya land use plan ringi, eng facilitate tal permitting process? Or is that, ah, I'm, I'm trying to.
Well, ah, ah, to make it more specific, eh, laal sila constitution amal gayok, mese avision, amal gayok, al development community ringi, ah, maintainers and small community field. What does that mean? Kanamor ya visioner ka, mo boom dang ok, lem takatikik, mese madang tiang ra balu, kama maylaltaim. Magaragi motobidin mo ra national, mese low mes igal permit kamam, ngater, mese dilia, ay, mese kotama, obi ablar say, ulmay. Namodekal fitling motra, avisioner igal state. Odoto bidisel vision based constitution, constitution igal state, la nga ya oguswir. Eduhum sa national, wotapasul, mese me investor, andang didrut was stavo, den mortama, tamata. Blakatak ma de di melot tau taurior. Akumdasos say, one at teal, sel lo mes ringi, in terms of looking at revisiting this law, put some key to manage dream, more ya consideration, siida gageedal swadal, momusauta. Siida koram ne example.
Acti swadal koran point out, eh, siya kumdaseng, blakatak la pointer kau, korosisiwul, kumdasha di only state tangar belaw, nga ya kura some sort of a zoning law, nga ya kura state. So, sukumta proposal something, eng biota EQPB, ah, facilitated tal process, oridito kasi tiya zone, resort area, tiya zone, so. Thank you for that.
And, and maybe one more, sit, we know that there's work with a joint coordinating body in Marara since last year, merelang. El masaada iga regida SLM, malubong vision igal state. Let's combine this work and see where we end up. I think we'll be in a stronger position.
Thank you. Ah, Scotty Ale, mister ngayo.
Sula ye, Senator, ngora mil laklat kakara, imongera, at tigal ble swakal point out ringil part ngang, there is a sectioner, alsel ngal proposed tal bill, el masaada sayi regida lo makara ala state. El wayaldul was say, yang alleviate er sel, eh, gamantel process ra malayra permit, al sukumang atterel murayyel uldaswel sel balu, ltoya museis ra alsel. And I, I think Kevin mentioned something that's really important. Maybe the reason why, kada namo olbanan oaytang, maybe tal laam, ramnamo uspea, aku kura, at talgibel lo malod aringil, melisi aringil mo attera, aku pladvora alsel el tretail. Mang, eh, sel uldasul mul was say, others, part tra streamlining, etal process, eh, da nga ya iga regida toya residential area, el muray, residential development tal muray igal state. I, I think is an excellent idea, mosupir sel lagornya Kevin, mo atter ayal vision, ma vision strategies ra igal individual state. But, don't forget, tal kmo, ndir gamlo meri garison, el masaada ringil was say, kadom talubra EQPB, ngobra the lurior, agur regasak mo ngnamo de gaadet swal laurior EQPB. Algo begensis etir, at tedob ra aradam narmeida, edeha gaadet swal mong bika setegidal, ula araa abal mortir. Magadamas tirir obra adel ngaraala, emargon emer aykerle, omara abertir, omet abadel mortir, edeha gada ngasutirir ilgut maclia dalang akliir. Eh, kukma ay mulul, mo maknaal state. Malungil, adan nga ya mo na state, ang mo bayot, natir gayidal ma obodel, ma raadal kei gal balu, ah, access igal service. But, with the due support. And now we're talking about, deakal one, ah, EQPB, regida giredel nga ya funding responsibility regida as a nation, el momat mo claringi, melisi ringi. Now we have seventeen offices, sixteen in states, ma tal national agency. So it's a fi- a financial burden, el morangal republic, but if that is a direction, el gida swadal malay ringi, because enklo balugul, meri gide, yaltang mo, ogut maclad development, mang sob aklaya isayra blurbelaw, then, ngiredel sois, per alsel etal mocla. El fully fund da igal sixteen offices, igal state, el nyam ah, orior, el waya, ah, EQPB, adang. Come on, Sula.
Oy, ala, sa te ela, Senator Agitaya.
Masulang sula, kisulang sula, sin, olah of.
Para sel point, Agitaya, tigal mal, na elbanatil ayidal, pointer kau eh, mister ngayo, akumdaseng giredel modifiner klungela residential, blay, tangariya guk ma clubliri ra hotel. And I think we need to maybe define our sayi regida, and, and where your building is more important. So, acti huskomegi regida, kura food for thought eh. Sa te ela, Olgarina.
Letal, maya kakukoram lekriler, tirigel adra EQPB, eh, nga kamil karal ngartiang, ma kukukko, kera nga kalwasen, mang kukngara oguswim. Esayi regiden sel guk, sel laal wasel, lungul muray igal state. Mung dilia en, nga ya kura ulsi support tiya gide. Eh, nga kar sel time, ah, koradi rokosisiwul oguswe, kame el altaim, el kukkiril say. Nsabiel nga ya sel, todung central, database, el imolobis, el gida lroku ya ma fully support. Di guk, tongur ngak, ndaktul waseng physikling obis igal virtual state. Ak pay wasa more importanta, ngel aden ya, assign del expert ra. Igal kukurior, el waya lurere, la kuk, ngara aler sel, lengya, mangatadu ra rader sel balu, matmatingel wasen, nga rera masen, nga rera temirar wataa, nga rera nga, aungil lohul, nga rera aungil ngara. Engke ya direktling kuktiri portal merthial central database, raha adra, nga ya tirigaidal experts, or engineers, environmental experts. Sayaba, mle on tiger sel time, el mutel on tiger elang. Waseng, um, giredel ngutyal ngaraala, el spread ringi, muray garo kuil, sixteen states. Not necessarily in obis. Ding, moringi ngel aden ya, ah, responsible, el sayaku kmera lela, malgayok, kmera lela. Lang madangali, tiyal balu lang, others tiyal balu, eh, report to the main.
Low, eh, el staff for EQPB, is that what you're saying?
Um, kada, alingitanya swakamiu, mo komrulisel budget, eh, EQPB, mo include ra bat, ah, odotel, ngkei gide alas. El responsible ringi ya, maldi make sure, on top of every, ah, house that's built, business, lorul, waseng ngara kiril, alubendia, edhi report ra daily basis, merah central.
Okay. Yeah, maam, sa point oh. Ak mister babyar, adam dakal swakal mo malgo hak, na, sumangan ya, sumil mo, malgo, in sabamiu, al tigal, alubokmukting ngartiang, al koradi omes ra. On gageida, Johnny, eh, for your information, ngadigal mle, otaratam, uluror EQPB, mong la digal kura sel mal, mo help regi, kamiti.
Ah, sula ye, senators, di swakal kamen tal kmo, ah, kamle fifteen years ago, EQPB. Um, the three basic questions of EQPB are, what are you gonna do? How much of the environment you're gonna impact? And how much you as a developer can minimize, ah, that impact? It's very three simple questions. It's just most people don't wanna do it. From my experience, beginning a, the, a investor, businessman, monmu trukumiu, other olbil. Oy, tirigel me omontara, EQPB, ah, adra sobay, etirigel ogiwulir, raha other olbil, luulag, el mora adra sobay. Akman di kmur kumiu was say. Fifteen years ago, raha igal montay, angarang, arbabal ath, mapta odudir, ma wila, wila basirir, el may. Raha adra balu, el rimurti igal permit, adhaal, tamalotira klala, er mulan mor silpkur babalse brir, ogut mocla. Pay di kumiu, lo ger kumiu, mo ger raha adra sobay. Sayi gida, aluul EQPB, ah, klungyo lela balu. It works. It may not work perfectly other time, but it works. Se alogtolomu ul merelang. Ega regida fifteen years ago, ror, ndi tirigel, nga ya odudir, kumiu ngarbabal ath, ah, impact ra igal togor EQPB. Ngiredel kmu, mo gomomu dingi, tiya gidera, ra iraal merelal was say. And I think some are just not happy with the way, ah, EQPB laws impacts them personally, but namo, sayi gida gukti personal opinion. But from experience, it's usually people with money, power, that have issues with EQPB. The common citizen, I believe, a soril motmokra blurir, environmentally friendly. And if you're gonna go out there and sell Palau without EQPB, I don't know how that's gonna work. Sula.
Sula ye, mister Kentaro, raha, kamen tsaka, ah, kamiti mal na take note. Amo deha, ngartiang swal mutel mo dadu. Oh, Olgarila.
Malsoak sel dilia, Johnny, makpail dil diol ngital was say, kalal sabiu, our, our, mang taklet, ah, both houses, il pay mo, instead of tiyang, eh, pay indismissed tiyang, eh, pay mrelia, la, el development plan, el kiril raha other belaw. Sayi gide, pay botouril kiril sel, wasen, ngara aungil moringi, ablila ath, nga rera aungil moringi, landro mat, stoang, restaurant. Ayke ya malungil, tiya EQPB law is good. Ndakatlmalel, pay gida, giredel, lo mesul wasen, nga rera ngil doora ngarangi.
Um, I would just like to say, ah, similar to what has been said, ah, I was able to take an environmental assessment class in Japan, ah, focusing on how, um, to start of development with, ah, the priority of protecting the environment. And, um, when I was in this class of probably seventy students, um, most of what was discussed was for Japan and China, for their, ah, envi- environmental protection agencies. And, ah, we had the opportunity to share about what we do in our own countries. And I was one of the few that was able to say that Palau has a environmental quali- protection quali- quality board. And, ah, being, ah, and I told them that with this, um, ah, board, we were able to have, our environment is how it is today because of them. And, ah, obviously, there are challenges and barriers within EQPB that I have seen working in the community and, ah, working with, ah, different NGOs. And, um, I've thought of what is a better way to improve and better have, um, to have better efficiency within EQPB, not to have it changed and moved to somewhere else. And I think with, if, ah, EQPB has a very big, ah, job and, um, role in our protection of our environment, and I think that it needs improvements. And what has been previously said, I think it should be separate from the ministry. So, thank you.
Tom sa te ela la, ri son.
Sula ye, Chair. So, ak madimula final comment ngak, ak malungit. I know that, ah, gida'll improve EQPB, but again, etamal ospe, our resources ma support. Ding, ah, it this really reminds me, you know, United States, national agency we know, the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA. And I think it's, you know, relevantly related to what we have in Palau. And the only reason amiga lospe ringi is because they saw the, the impact on not just the environment, but the quality of life of the people of the United States. Instead, um, noringi, ah, dena amiga lo mes was say, nga rera mosmer because of the contamination of water, you know, all these. And so, it's so vital that, ah, EQPB should be more empowered than, you know, downsized. So, ak malungit, tal was say, yes, butokat constrained or challenges, but I have to compliment them for keeping Palau on track despite its own challenges or whatever issues it may have. Malakadawara tamper with it, because nga gabigal was say, I'm very, I'm grateful that there is someone to monitor our water, monitor our environment, monitor the conditions of our, because aldeka nga ringi, dakasbadan mula business, and even that impacts our way of life. So, ak malungit, tal was say, please reassess and reconsider was say, EQPB should be autonomous and independent. Ding, one of those strengths we can improve and also, you know, address those weaknesses. Ding, I, malungit, kamilo was say, m'support the EQPB, malorula relir. Thank you.
Ah, m'tonma, ah, Miss Holma.
Sula ye, Senator Sangbao, last, ah, final comment I forgot to mention. I think especially dangerous, tigal part rabil, el was say, fifteen days, fifteen days. And if not, and then automatically, ah, the application is rendered approved. Just wanna make the comment that, eh, gageidal issues, ah, you know, the, the, um, the very big spectrum of simple to very technical and complicated. And so it's not a one size fits all type of a approach that we can use with these things. Um, I also wanna comment that a lot of times EQPB gets blamed for taking a long time when it's not actually EQPB. It's either historical, or UXO, or core state planning and zoning. And so this is why, again, environmental educator and the outreach is so important. But, um, I think it's really important, and thank you, Johnny, for your very frank comments. I think it's really important to also make sure that, um, ah, our mahuteling, at tigal, they're careful with how they speak about EQPB. It's a very, it's a tough agency, you know? Everybody complains about EQPB. We wanna make sure that our leaders, when they speak about EQPB, they're speaking truthfully. And I recall one time, ah, President Whip said, you know, it's, it took two years for SDA building to get their approval. And definitely two years is an unreasonable timeframe. So I checked with the EQPB staff. It actually took nine weeks. It didn't take two years. So I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about what happens when people submit their applications. And the applications, when they're deemed final, maybe that's when the countdown and timeframe needs to start. But I just wanted to share that, that those are definitely issues, um, that fifteen days is very dangerous. And also, I just wanna bring it back to the ethics. I think another concern that I've seen over the years, from the early days when I came back home from school, EQPB, rarely did the board not take the advice of their technical staff. Whereas today, we're seeing that happen on a regular basis. And I think another potential solution, eh, Senator Mason, is maybe there should be some minimum criteria for board members. Maybe that's a, a potential solution as well. Sula.
Sule, um, tumla reminder na, mister, um, Tarita Holm, basa, basa ngakadi. Oh, subesera, oh, legal mold, dimnak talise. Oy, ala, sa te ela, Anthony, rudima.
Malungitasil se, Chairman eh, dakbal kamaal, alta, taagandi, I, I think kula di clarify, kuse ngakamacha, Johnny, amle, legal opinion, ah, personal opinion, na gi mel kukmalgo, omterap, PPUC. Engdi, ak pay di, shele igal gukti brief lakansur na, aku, ah, experience, ranga, natal grim review, adakumente nga ya contract, giplamaurior ringi, yang mle fourteen day, ah, aku, review turnaround period. And even though, ah, I gi review ringi at stages, ah, let's say in thirty percent, sel, progress report, eh, kukmei magi review, for, within fourteen days, eh, gi, gramal revert. Assume they gim respond within that fourteen days, and then deemed approved. Ah, kukti consider, dosisiwul mora, misterita, mese sel fifteen days al amal kadep, considering that EQPB, ah, by the time al ngua, application requesting, tiya mualblal, full, final reports. I think fifteen days is a bit short. Um, and then, eh, di swakal di share, acti experience, sel, al, gimil, liawanar project, raha twenty sixteen. Benda kulukos, ngarad project, ta gageidal nga ya since two thousand sixteen, kola tim tagali. Ding, two thousand sixteen, I believe, EQPB, ah, dimnaka full-time engineeringil on island, mle part-time, nga ya adult of islande. And the difference ra progress raurior, when during that time, ah, sera twenty nineteen, el nangingil engineered, actually, tumnoterung, nga ya, ardihuliping, ah, adrangabard, mle full-time, el kerabelaw. It really helped, raha, getting answers, ah, and then, and I have to say, then, mane help full, things were pragmatic. Ah, 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 policy or regulations etir, al tankmul was say. Ndidi bora site, et, tangartiang, matamol mesas site, et explain abla the rule, mitigation measures. Engnesi il, kura, convince rabord, kuk exempt ringi, ding, there's no other way. Mung, I think it does help, mung, it touches on giving them the resources. Then, eh, kukti last, ah, dikmusing, who, ah, di da encourage EQPB, mung, al sukum tuuk ma apart, raha, eh, help per tal reerir, ah, I know, kuse summa project, over a, a hundred thousand. Engri, ngar part regulation, kuse ngel developer, or let's say PPUC, amrak murang, we have to have a conception or inception meeting. Lora, mstiray direction. Ding, tigal, gada di kukti encourage etir, matatibal mo active rather than, deakal follow off, deakal chegaregido, ulid al malna mursel uril, eh, me maskida kamen setiril. So maybe those are just some comments. Di was say, gi, gi mamoa, mrolung.
Malsole, Anthony koma, Johnny, mal, amlinusit tal hearing, eh, mese imilme, kuk, ah, provide the kamen tsakamiu. Eh, al sukum, ndi ganye, kumdas sa, sungilal, ah, amnan nga kura niswal mo, malgo, eh, do sa te ellel, tigal babyar, Senator, sabodong simra, adang. Sula ye, Chairman eh, malungilitasis merbeklaath, ah, kotak maluriga suril girela, igal kamen teramiu. Ah, yidoga, kuk Chairman ra, yudum selgister, me grel adel, kura stand up, el kura raise, eh, gageidal, lul daswir, marangriel girela, togoe, malmogil, arongudel mstirir, ngalal, maral momaklola, adel, tegay gageidal responsibility, raha, igal public hearing. So I appreciate you tool, maluswil me, mkomodolwe. Oy, ulte, ri son, oy.
Yeah, and also, if I may also add, you know, ah, ah, the war, igal tankma, igal gera, talgera, gamadam narina, pilli. We've learned that this caused a lot of contaminants to the water. So, mo ulakas, you know, mangarabersel balu, is because of that. So, with the knowledge, we understand was say, more ya change. But because of those changes, the reason why gida malregulate the environment, etir la. Because there's gonna be a lot of chemicals, a lot of toxins, a lot of impacts. So, nga ya monitoring, mitigating body, and sabel insure was say, iga sustainable, and we can manage and have a clean environment. Olagigita, ngit ringi, ah, EQPB. So, um, iki mal appreciate tal, ding, please, ah, EQPB, ah, mal important autonomy body. So, senro teringi, ah, Senate, mal appreciate sayi del, mnasur ingi. Thank you.
Thank you. Eh, agitaya, ndakang, okay. Sula ma, tigal gida, kuklosel la kamiti, like I said, akumdaswa kamiti, ah, kuk, ah, baby nga ya gil kuk, ah, swal mo, mengatmo. And di, gimla kamen sel, girel tiyang alumbio, per sayi gidan mora, second reading. Mung, ah, gimal appreciate tal gil kamen sel lamadong, eh, ulgit, amadilpori tiyang, ah, hearing gide, bol meri.